Hi, good evening. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. To the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting, tonight, Monday, October 21st, 2024. Tonight, the Board met an executive session at 6:00 PM in the James Caldwell High School Room 105. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting had been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. Tonight, the public conference meeting, forgive our tardiness, is happening at 7:07 PM here in the James Caldwell High School cafeteria. The Board of Education meeting is being streamed live, but all community questions and comments are welcomed here in person only. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting is also in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress in Caldwell, New Jersey, the Star Ledger in Newark, New Jersey, and TAP into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office in the Harrison School Building, Gray Street, West Caldwell, and have been delivered to the clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the row?
Yes, Ms. DiMartini.
Here.
Ms. Lindofy Jefferson.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. D'ambola.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
So we have five voting members present. We have a quorum.
Great. Can everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, are there any communications for the board this evening?
There were none.
Okay, great. So we're going to move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President. I'd like to invite Josiah Sackey up to get voted in. He is our student council president for the high school. Josiah?
I'm gonna come right over here.
Come over here, buddy.
All right, okay. All right, so what I'm gonna have you do is you could read these, I guess you could raise your hand for, or I can read these two statements. Okay, and then I'm gonna have you sign it.
I, Josiah Sackey, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Josiah Sackey, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law to be the student representative of the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education, and that I will faithfully and justly perform all the duties according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Great. All right, congratulations, and you can.
Yeah!
Josiah, just wait one second. We're gonna take a picture.
We'll take a quick picture.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We're so excited. The high school has sent us a bunch of different representatives so that someone's always here, so it's awesome. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to welcome our two House leaders, Brandon Keenan and Leo Goodwin. Brandon is from the House of Responsibility, and Leo is from the House of Endurance. If you guys could come up to the microphone, tell us all the great stuff at the middle school.
That's Landon, right? Leo, that's Leo. You look so much like Landon Kelly. Oh, my goodness. Right? And not crazy, Leo, right? I'm like, Dr. Conklin, I think that's Landon. Oh, my goodness. Okay, sorry, Brandon, go ahead. You're up.
It's on. It should be.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brandon Keenan, and I'm a House Leader for the House of Responsibility. I would like to thank Dr. Conklin and the Board of Education for inviting us to speak at this meeting. The first thing I want to talk about is the student council elections. Recently, all advisory classes shared several videos created by the candidates for student council, and all students voted for who they believe should represent our school. Ultimately, student class president Jake Gieho, Vice President William Baumann, Secretary Vivian Iverson, Treasurer Matt Manancio, and Communications Officer Johnny Kordikowski will be representing our school for the 2024-2025 school year. The next thing I would like to talk about is the Ultimate Football Tournament. Our first intramural house tournament this school year was the Ultimate Football Tournament. Each house had five members represent our house after school in an Ultimate Football Tournament. After several close games, Responsibility took the win, moving them to first place in the house tournament. Our next intramural tournament will be handball, and will take place in November. The last thing I would like to talk about is one of the assemblies we had recently. In the beginning of October, students were gathered in the auditorium as motivational speaker Dr. Paul Stewart spoke on the topic of anti-bullying and disability awareness. In the first four years of Dr. Paul's childhood, he was unable to walk and had to learn how to walk again. Dr. Paul shared various stories in which he was bullied for his disability and had many struggles. This was an inspirational assembly that helped students recognize and appreciate differences that people have.
Hi, my name is Leo Goodwin. I'm the House Leader from Endurance. One of the things I'll be talking about is Sorting Day. On the second Friday of the school year, we announced the houses and the new sixth graders would be getting put into. To achieve this, all House Leaders gathered with their houses in the gym and cheered in the new sixth graders. We followed that up with a round of musical chairs that we, the House Leaders, participated in, and as well as some games for the sixth and seventh graders as well. Overall, it was a great end of the week for the new sixth graders. Then, Five Dollar Friday. Last Friday, we asked students and staff to bring in $5 to help out in need for people who suffered from the hurricanes. The house that most students participated in won a golden ticket to re-enter the house competition of their choice. We collected up to $800, and the house of respect won the golden ticket. The Food Drive. Each year, our school district collects food items to help stock the food pantry. Different schools are assigned different items to collect each year. This year, the middle school is in charge of collecting corn mix, salad dressing, rice, and cookies. All donations are due November 11. And lastly, the GCMS Make a Difference Field Trip. The GCMS Make a Difference program is new this year. It is a program that we established to help give students the opportunity to actually make a difference. Students can sign up to any of the four field trips that we have this year, one per marking period. Students went on the first field trip today to Grover Cleveland Park. Over 50 students volunteered to help make a difference by partnering up with the Grover Cleveland Park Conservancy to participate in several projects throughout the park. Thank you again, Dr. Conklin, and all members of the Board for your time. And does anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's been your favorite part about being a House Leader this year?
Probably just being able to hang out with all the kids younger than us.
Oh. What about you, Brandon?
My favorite part has probably been organizing all the events, because in the past years, I know some of the other House Leaders haven't really been happy with all the games that were picked, so this year, we actually get to decide what games we want to play.
Awesome. Great. Good job. Awesome. Great job, guys.
Can I borrow you guys to put in some pictures of the board? Cory, you ready?
Yeah, thank you also always to Ms. Silverthorne and Ms. Halkeas for bringing the kids every single board meeting. It's so great. We love to hear from them, so thank you both very much for that.
Now, we're gonna run the annual fall assessment presentation for the 23-24 school year. Hopefully, it'll be on the screens behind us, and people at home will be able to watch it. We run it through screen testify, so it's always available for the community to watch.
... on state assessments and our progress toward a wide year of strategic planning goals for student learning. This presentation and slides will be posted on our district website. Highlights from the 23-24 school year include the following. We met our grades 1 through 6 district reading goal. Seventy-three percent of students are reading honor above grade level. That's a 23% increase from 2020. On the English Language Arts ELA, New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, NJSLA, across all grades, we had our highest percentage of passing scores since the pandemic. On the math NJSLA, across all grades, we had our highest ever percentage of passing scores. In 11th and 12th grade, we increased by 8% the percentage of students meeting the SAT benchmarks in both math and ELA. Grades 6, 7, and 8 math and grade 10 ELA better linked a growth goal of improving 15% from the fall to spring. The first part of our presentation will cover our English Language Arts ELA performance for the 23-24 school year. This table shows how our students in grades 1 through 6 performed based on their reading levels. As you can see, we made significant gains in all grades and increased the total percentage of readers' honor above grade level in reading from 61 to 73% meeting our district goal. The implementation of multisensory phonics instruction in grades K through 3 using foundations and phonics first, in addition to targeted small group instruction, have been successful district initiatives. Students in grades 3 through 5 surpassed state averages on NJSLA. Our students in grades 4 made significant gains and performed 14% higher than they performed the year prior in 3rd grade.
Our 6th and 8th grade scores improved from the prior spring, up 17 and 4% respectively. This is our highest ever percentage of students passing in 6th grade. Our 9th graders set an all-time high in this spring NJSLA with a 17% improvement from spring 2023. Included in this presentation are data displays illustrating achievement levels, with the first three bars in each group representing the percentage of students who did not yet meet proficiency standards to varying degrees, and the last two bars shaded in green representing those that did meet or exceed proficiency standards. Across all grades, 66% of students met or exceeded proficiency standards in ELA last year. Here's performance across racial subgroups, disaggregated by gender, and performance of students by program, including free or reduced lunch, 504, English Language Learner, or ML status, special education, and general education. This data display illustrates performance in specific grade levels over time. Of particular note, our 3rd, 6th, and 9th graders' spiking performance this past year. This shows performance for the same group of students from last year to this year. Hub note is adjunct performance from 6th to 7th grade in ELA last year. These are our current 8th graders. The New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, NJGPA, is a required graduation test for all 11th graders. 94% of our students met the requirement in ELA, surpassing the state by 13%. This slide shows our NJGPA passing rates broken down by race. Data is not displayed where we have less than 10 students in a group for privacy reasons. This slide shows our NJGPA passing rates broken down by program, including free or reduced lunch, 504, English Language Learner, or ML status, special education, and general education. On the PSAT Preliminary Spolastic Attitude Test, our high school students continue to outperform the state. Here are our SAT results for 11th and 12th grade. We improved by 8% versus the 22-23 school year. We outperformed the state by 21%. We have made tremendous growth in achievement as a district and aspire to continuously strengthen our performance. Our Year Four Strategic Planning Goals in English Language Arts are noted here. And here are some of the ways in which we have and will continue to support students and staff in ELA via professional development and resource allocation.
The second part of our presentation will cover our math performance for the 23-24 school year. All of our elementary students outperformed the state between 14 and 19%. Similar to ELA, our 4th grade students made big gains as compared to their performance in 3rd grade, increasing the total number of students meeting standard by 14%.
At the middle school, all scores improved from the prior spring, and all grades outperformed the state. 7th and 8th grade demonstrated significant growth as compared to past cohorts, with 100% of Algebra I 8th graders meeting or exceeding proficiency standards. In fact, this past year, 20% of our Algebra I 8th graders exceeded proficiency standards. The Algebra I group at JCHS demonstrated a 20% improvement over the prior year, and Geometr 2 students outperformed the state by almost 25%. Seventy-two percent of our junior students met the proficiency requirement for math, exceeding the state by 17%. This slide shows our math NJGPA passing rates broken down by race and by program. We continue to outperform the state on the PSAT. For the math SAT, we saw an increase of 8% in students meeting or exceeding the benchmark as compared to the 22-23 school year. These charts mirror those demonstrated for ELA, but include 2023-24 math performance data. This chart illustrates student achievement levels by grade, performance across racial subgroups, disaggregated by gender, and performance of students by program, including free or reduced lunch, 504, English Language Learner, or ML status, special education, and general education. This data display illustrates performance in specific grade levels over time. Of particular note, our 3rd, 8th, and Algebra I 9th graders' spiking performance this past year. This shows performance for the same group of students from last year to this year. Hub note is adjunct performance from 6th to 7th grade in math last year. These are our current 8th graders. Our Year Four Strategic Planning Goals for math are noted here. And our PD and resources dedicated to math improvement are listed on this slide. This next part of our presentation will cover our science performance for the 23-24 school year. CWC outperformed the state across all schools and grades. These tests are designed to measure the science standards for students covered that year and those preceding it. The link on this slide has more information about this assessment. Here are science displays illustrating achievement levels, performance across racial subgroups, disaggregated by gender, and performance of students by program, including free or reduced lunch, 504, English Language Learner, or ML status, special education, and general education. Here are some of the resources and strategies we are using to support student achievement in science. At JCHS, students also take AP exams in May at the conclusion of their AP classes. These tests are scored from a 1 to 5, and a score of a 3 or better is considered passing. By passing an AP class test, students can earn college credits for free. Last year, our students matched our greatest percentage of students receiving a 3 or better on their AP test. This past school year, JCHS had its highest number of students take AP courses and tests. Eighty-five percent of these students earned a 3 or higher. This is the highest number of students in recent history who have taken and passed AP tests at JCHS. Also listed are specific courses where we had the most growth from last year: Biology, Calculus AB, Computer Science Principles, and US History.
Finally, these last slides provide information about achievement on assessments for multilingual learners, MLs, and students deemed eligible for the Dynamic Learning Assessments. Each year, MLs take the access test to measure their growth in listening, reading, speaking, and writing. Scores range across six levels. This slide shows our student performance in each grade band and across the whole district. Here is performance across racial subgroups, disaggregated by gender, and performance of students by program, including free or reduced lunch and special education.
The Dynamic Learning Map, DLM, is administered to students with significant cognitive disabilities for whom state assessments are not appropriate. Score ranges are referenced here, and individual student reports are mailed home to parents and guardians. This concludes our annual fall assessment presentation for the 2023-24 school year. Please feel free to reach out to your child's principal for any questions. We thank our students, staff, Board of Education, and families for all the support that led to last year's growth and achievement.
The presentation is going to be posted on the website tomorrow for anyone to look at. The links are all live, so when you're going through it, you can attach all those links. If you have any questions, please send me an email or reach out to your child's principal if there's any current questions about the presentation. We're happy to, we have a couple of the people, Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Jones are here tonight to answer any questions that people may have. Board members?
Does anyone have any questions on the presentation they'd like to ask? Are you now anybody?
That concludes my report then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Before we move on, this is not a voting meeting, so I'm just gonna peruse the agenda, then I'm gonna open up public comment for anything on or off the agenda. Before I do that, I just want to thank Ms. Jones, Ms. Jacobs, and Mr. Abudin. Poor Jamil. I just always say Jamil because it's easier to pronounce, but I'd like to thank him, as well as all of our teachers and the district, all of their hard work. We've seen such significant growth. It takes a village, and they are truly such a wonderful team, so a big thank you to our teachers. Especially, we saw a lot of growth in the high school, and I know they've worked really hard over the summer aligning their curriculum, and that doesn't go without notice or gratitude. So, thank you all very, very much. Okay, so I'm just gonna quickly peruse the agenda. Nothing really exciting going on, and then we're gonna open up public comment, because I know I see a lot of familiar faces here. Probably wanted to talk to us about the referendum. And just as a reminder, the architect will be here on November 4th, the day before Election Day, to go through the referendum, more FAQs, and answer any more specific questions. But just moving through, we have our community-based instruction. They're going to Montclair. They do such a great job in that program. Some more field trips. We love that the kids are getting out and about. Thank you to our teachers. We know that they are solely responsible for coordinating that, and it's a lot of hard work on them, so thank you to our wonderful, amazing teachers for that. We have some personnel changes going on, certification of funds, boring, boring, boring. Some joint transportation contract with North Caldwell. And I just have to once again, just very grateful to Brian and the business office, because we really are very fortunate as a district to have the transportation fleet that we have here, and it brings in six-figure revenue to the district, right, Bri? Like, how much does it bring in about?
Between 150, 200.
Yeah, I mean, it's no small chunk of change. We help out a lot of neighboring districts by picking up their kids, and they pay us a nice amount of money for it. It's great revenue for the district, but it takes a lot of coordination from Brian and his team, and we're very grateful for that. It's great. And every year, it's built up, and it's a lot, and it's awesome. So, thank you, Brian. Just want to look at this real quick. Oh, yeah, we have in here, for the varsity JV ice hockey program, we reached our agreement once again with West Essex, so that program can go through. That's something that is a great opportunity for our kids that play hockey. They get to make relationships with West Essex, and it's a really wonderful thing. So, we have that. We did that. Brian, thank you for getting that done as well. Let's see, usage of facilities. We love that people want to use our schools. We also, you can see towards the end of the year here, we have a lot of people renting out the building. Again, that's revenue, and Brian has really increased that as well. So, big kudos, thank you to the business department. They're so busy. It's amazing. And that'll about do it for the agenda. So, right now, I'm gonna open up public comment for items on or off the agenda. We're gonna do it a little differently tonight, because it's a non-voting meeting. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. The boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues, or enter into question and answer, or cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware, not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issues to the superintendent or his designee. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's comments if they exceed the allotted time or are objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. So that being said, would anyone like to get up and speak to anything on or off the agenda this evening? Jern? Yes, Jern, come on.
I'm gonna talk really fast, so I get it all in in my three minutes.
That's okay. We're not gonna.
My name is Jerni Sofeli. I live at 64 McKinley Ave. in West Caldwell, and I'm here to discuss the importance of building a new field house for our town, focusing on the future athletes, especially the female athletes here in James Caldwell. The current field house constructed in 1943 presents serious health concerns that directly impact our athletes. Its aging structure, outdated facilities pose health risks, such as inadequate ventilation, mold growth, insufficient space for proper training. These conditions not only hinder athletic performance, but also compromise the well-being of our students, making it crucial that we invest in a safe, modern facility that supports their health and development. While this project will require a tax increase, the benefit to our community far outweighs the few dollars a month. A new field house will provide our students with a dedicated space for enhancing their preparation and performance. This will empower them to fully pursue their athletic dreams. It's also important to note that the field house is being used exclusively for our high school students and will not be used by Caldwell University. This ensures that our students will have all the resources they need to thrive. Investing in a facility is not just about sports. It's about attracting families to our town who want the best for the future of their children. A robust athletic department can grow and draw in new residents, boosting our current local economy. Most importantly, and in my opinion, most importantly, our female athletes deserve equal opportunities. And this facility will serve as a powerful inspiration for the next generation of strong, confident women leaders. The new field house will feature a balance of a 50-50 split for male and female athletes, an essential step forward, especially considering the only facility currently available to our female athletes near the field house is a single-stall bathroom. This change is not just significant, it is long overdue. I often hear people suggest renovating the existing field house to save money, but that approach still falls short our female athletes. On a more personal note, sorry, I have a type 1 diabetic daughter, and she deserves a place to be able to care for herself that is clean and safe. Her condition requires her to often change medical devices in the middle of a practice or in a sporting event. She deserves, because she is an incredible athlete, a place to go where she can maintain dignity and respect, where she needs to change her medical devices or seek medical attention. It isn't fair for her to have to go to a one-stall bathroom or all the way back to this building, to the gym. So, to close, a field house would provide her with a safe, clean, private environment to make necessary adjustment to her medical needs, ensuring that she's able to focus on the game, just like all her teammates. My daughter Anna deserves this field house, and so do all the females in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jern. Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and address the board? Hi, come on up. Hi, Sandra Kramer, 25, Gould Place. I'm not sure I want to follow that, but I'll try. So, I'm here to share my thoughts also on the.
So I'm here to share my thoughts also on the referendum of the upcoming field house. So I have a 17-year-old son who is a senior and a 13-year-old daughter who attends GCMS. My son is in his last year of the football program here at the high school, so you may think, like, why do you care? He's a senior, you have no dog in the race. But I think that's the issue. First, sometimes we plant the seed, not so our generation has shade, but so that future generations get to reap the benefit. Second, the Kern Field House that we just heard has absolutely nothing to offer my daughter when she starts school here. It will have nothing to offer anyone's daughter or any student with a disability, regardless of the sport they play. So we have an opportunity to change that. The Kern Field House, like we just heard, was built in the 40s. I believe it does not meet Title IX requirements, and it's also not ADA compliant. I was just there last week for a mom's night for football, and I thought, hey, as a fundraising idea, maybe like during Halloween, we could do like, you know, a haunted house experience in the field house because there's like chipped paint and like mold, and it's damp and scary, and you know, maybe we could raise money that way. I'm kidding. I wish I was kidding, but I'm actually not. So I urge that come March, any voters that really want to make an informed decision, just take a walk over and look for yourselves. And speaking of voting, about 10 years ago, there was another bond referendum that also brought very mixed reactions in our community. At the time, the improvements included things like installing air conditioning throughout the high school, and the most hot topic was the turf at Bonnell Field. So at the time, many in the community thought these upgrades were frivolous, expensive, unnecessary. We could just fix what was there. And now I think, can you imagine that 10 years later? If you asked the high school students in the, you know, 500 wing that was called the sauna, how they would deal without air conditioning, or our lovely field that we enjoy here at Bonnell Field, I thank those taxpayers 10 years ago for making that decision. So again, as we also heard, there's nothing in the Kern Field House if you're a female. Every time I attend an event here, I always think, what does the away team think? Like, here's this awesome field and this awesome school, and if you're female and you have to go to the bathroom, ugh, like, there's one stall maybe open for you, or there's a porta potty. So that's not great. The field house is a stark reminder to me that there's no female coach, athlete, or visitor that's welcome there. So I trust the plan that's been presented to us, has been reviewed by either the mayors, the town council members, key stakeholders, all of which we as a community have decided that they're in their position, like you guys, to make the best decision for us. So let's trust them. I'm putting my faith in them. I'm putting my faith in the voters of Caldwell and West Caldwell that they will continue to put children first, which always puts our community first. So I'll end with this. This past Friday at the football regular season home game, our last home game, the esteemed former athletic director, Ron Sanfilippo, was inducted into Legends Park at Bonnell Field. One of the overarching themes in that presentation made about Mr. Sanfilippo was that he always made sure the kids had the best equipment, the best uniforms. Everything he did was to ensure the kids had all the best resources they needed to be successful, as they could be, because it's always about the kids. So let's make it about the kids and plant that seed so that our future generations will thank us for the shade. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra, thank you. Anyone else? Want to get up? Sure, come on.
Good evening. My name is Sharon DeMeo-Mutis, and I live at 231 West Phil Avenue, West Caldwell, New Jersey. And as much as I would really like to support the building of the field house, I have a few issues. The first is we're spending $15.4 million. Of that, we're building a two-story field house, and my question is still, for what? I understand we need a new field house that's ADA compliant. I completely agree. I do not believe we need a two-story field house. I also am concerned because with all the new building that's going on in Caldwell, in West Caldwell, our elementary schools are already busting at the seams. Where are we putting these students? We're building a field house, but we're not thinking about the 100-year-old middle school. We're not thinking about Lincoln being 100 years old. These all are going to have to be problems that are addressed too. The taxpayers, you're telling us it's $130 for each estimate. I think it was $200,000, they said. Our houses are not valued at $200,000, so it's a little more than $130 a year. I'm just concerned because we are financing something that I cannot justify. A second floor on $15.4 million, and we're not investing in our education? Yes, I agree with the first referendum, but it's the second one that I really have a problem with. So as much as I would love to build this field house, I do not believe this is the right amount of money to spend, or it's a two-story building. But I do believe we do need a new field house. I just don't think we're going about it the right way, spending our tax dollars.
Thank you.
And again, we still need to think about the education and the buildings we have that are already falling apart.
Thank you, Sharon. I just want to just correct a couple things. So the first one is the tax impact is for, the average home is not $200,000. It's based on the average home of $450,000.
Okay, that's what we were told the other night, that's why. Okay, that's why you weren't here.
That is the truth. We are also too, we have a PR firm that was with the board. You're going to be getting newsletters to the house. The website's going to have all the information on one page for you to access, so as we get... And once those numbers, when we hear back from the Department of Education, and we find out the debt service aid that we're getting, all of that will be updated, so we'll have final figures before you go out to vote. So I just wanted to say that.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, okay, so the other thing is, just to address Lincoln and GCMS, all of the infrastructure issues in the district, the big, main infrastructure issues are in question one at no tax impact. So I just want to say, and I have to clarify this, and I have to defend the board, okay, frankly, because the board had an option, okay, when we were going to go for a referendum. We could have put everything into one question and forced the hand of the voters. We could have been like, if you don't vote this referendum, the buildings are going to fall down, and because we want that field house. What the board did responsibly, and I'm going to give this group of individuals credit, okay? We said, we split the question because the infrastructure issues of the district that we cannot afford with our operating budget are so great, like you're mentioning. The facade at Lincoln School, the facade at GCMS, the staircase at GCMS, the Lincoln School lobby, the security... All of that is so critical for the safety of our children and our staff. That's in question one at no tax impact. We took the field house that the board feels is a necessity, but we understand that people like yourself feel that it is a luxury, even though you do support something in a way.
Absolutely.
We put that in question too, to give a voter a choice. Because we believe in the voters of the Caldwell, West Caldwell District. We believe that it is their right, because we live in the United States of America, thank God, where it is a democracy, and it is your choice as a voter here in the United States to make that educated choice. So we did something responsible, but I have to just say, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, so please, if I come up, I don't really mean it. I have to defend the board and say, we are not not addressing the infrastructure needs of this community. It is all addressed. There will be nothing to do in this district with question one passing. The huge infrastructure, safety, and security needs of this district are addressed in question one.
Okay, but my question, my concern is not only are we addressing that, but think about all the building that's going on. So with all the building, the condos and everything...
So we just renovated, I'm going to interrupt as well. So we just renovated Harrison School, is now a fully functioning school, okay? We are about to switch superintendents, okay? The new superintendent will come in here and do what he or she feels is best, work with the community to open that building as a viable school. What that school is going to be, we don't know yet. We are now, we are in too much flux. It's not fair to the community to leave it in the hands of Dr. Conklin. He's not going to be here to do what's right for the community. He's leaving as of June 30th, okay?
I understand.
So we're going to have a new leader to come in that will engage the community, that will then present a plan to the community to open that building. The board, again, I have to give the board credit. When the buildings were going up years ago, in COVID, when Caldwell was putting up massive apartment complexes, the board was on those meetings, listening in, okay, virtually. Engaged a client, um, help me, Dr. Conklin, what's that call when you do the...
Demographics.
Thank you. Engaged a demographics study. Went out, took our own funds to make sure that Harrison was a fully functioning ADA-compliant school so that we could turn it into something to make sure that class sizes stay at 25 or less, okay? We have all those things, Sharon. We have done those things. I just want to be very clear. All of those things we have talked about and discussed, it's all out there. We have, this is all part of the plan.
Okay, I'm just saying, I just see more and more buildings. So the studies that you did may not be what they are now because they keep building.
They definitely are.
They are, okay. That's my fault. I will definitely go back and pull some of the data.
Yeah, when we did the demographics study, it was at the height of all of that building going on. So Caldwell had already had those plans.
I didn't know that particular plan, but I saw most of it.
Yeah, that was one of the main goals behind taking funds that we had because, again, this is a very fiscally responsible board. We had almost, I mean, our capital reserve is very, very healthy, and we are putting $2 million against the field house to keep the tax impact low. So it is not really $15.4 million to the taxpayer. That would be the overarching cost. We're putting $2 million against it. So really, it's $13 million. That's really what it's going to be because we're using $2 million of our own funds against it to keep the tax impact lower. So I just, I just have to get out there and say those things to make sure. And I do appreciate, and listen, Sharon, you are an info... I love that you're here. I love that you're being informed. I love that you come to talk to us. Do it all the time. I love it. But I do have to say, I have to defend the board in the fact that all of these things have really been very carefully calculated and planned out with all of the things that you're discussing already put to bed. Like, those are things that went into the planning of this referendum.
Okay, I appreciate your comments back to me. I just want to let you know, it was told to us $200,000 last, the last meeting I was at. So maybe I misunderstood what they said.
Yeah, that's okay. It's 450. I know that it's the average assessed value of the home right now, which is 450.
I believe you. It's just that there were some numbers thrown out last time, and I questioned some of the numbers that were thrown out, especially...
I also know, I wasn't at the last meeting.
That's right.
I had a family emergency, so please forgive me.
Well, I'm glad everything is better.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Of course, absolutely. And I just want to say, I know the architect misspoke the last time and said 80 lockers. It is not. It is 60. That is definitive. He will correct that on November 4th. It is 60 for the boys and 60 for the girls. That is the size of both locker rooms, okay? 60 lockers for the boys and 60 for the girls.
He said there are two locker rooms for the boys and two for the girls. He said 80 and 80 and 40 and 40.
It's not. It's 60 and 60.
And 40 and 40, correct.
It's 60 and 60. So the boys' locker room is broken out as 40 and 20. The girls' locker room is...
You messed up.
Yeah, he messed up. The board, yeah, so I just, I know that there was a lot of like outrage. I don't mean that in a disrespectful way. People were like, what are you talking about? But I'm going to just say, the board reported back to me. I was in the hospital with my daughter, so they were like calling me like, Greg messed up. It was, but he just, listen, I love our architect. He's amazing, but he's also on a bunch of other projects. When he comes back, it's 60 and 60. I know that for a fact.
But the square footage is 8,000 square feet.
We have to have you go to the microphone, sorry.
Yeah, if you could just, yeah, and first and last name, just forgive me.
Rich Genatempo, 24 Mountain Avenue, Caldwell. Well, just on that topic, the square footage is 8,000 square feet, right? The first floor.
I don't, I don't have the drawings in front of me, so I don't want to affirm to it.
Maybe it's 16,000 total.
I just know the number of lockers is 60 and 60.
So what are we doing with all the space?
Well, have you seen the drawings of the field house?
Yeah, so the public bathroom looks massive, looks absolutely massive. And you can't tell what it is exactly, and if you're saying the locker room's actually, it's actually smaller, less lockers...
They're not, they're not, it's just less lockers.
Less lockers, but the space is still the same, so...
The space is the same, the space is equal for the boys and girls.
If I can say, it's the size. You know, if we need something new, absolutely. But 16,000 square feet seems, I mean, if you actually plan out 8,000 square feet, it's actually, it's massive. So I went out saying, let me look at all the peers. People, our schools that we play against are in the local areas to see what they have, okay? West Essex, closest to us, right? Lot more wealth in West Essex, the towns of West Essex, right? We can agree with that, I think, right? They're, they don't have a field house, they have bathrooms, 20 by 20, 400 square feet. And they have a concession stand. And they use porta potties, by the way. This is West Essex. The kids, at halftime, they go back to school. Again, this is West Essex. But you're telling us we need 16,000 square feet? It's two completely different things. I went to Modville. I'll show you the pictures of Modville. They use porta potties. This is Modville. So when you say we need, I'm okay with it. I'm saying, okay, let's build something for men and women. But 16,000 square feet is absolutely ridiculous. I can keep going, by the way. I went to Verona, I went to Cedar Grove, I went to Columbia. Columbia's field is not near the high school. They can't go back to high school. It's about a half a mile. And that's 65 by 40, one floor. So the team goes there, and the bathrooms are there. But yet, we need 16,000 square feet? How can you justify that? So, and I would go to one of the topics about bringing, bringing things to the town that benefit the town, that makes the town better, and people want to move here. And I don't think it's lockers and bathrooms or a wrestling room above. I think there are things, don't get me wrong, I really do. I mean, you look forward to the next 10, 20 years, job creation and economy, AI, semiconductors, 3D printing, robotics, cybersecurity. These is the areas we should be investing in. So if you said to me, we're going to build a field house in the bottom where we're going to have lockers, bathrooms, and then above, we're going to put a 3D printing lab, a robotics lab, an AI...
That's in question one. That 3D robotics lab, that's all in question one at no cost to the taxpayer. That's the renovation.
And where's that?
So the referendum, so there's a whole wing in the high school? That's in question one.
All right, so we don't need a second floor then. My point is that these are the areas that we should be investing in, not, 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 not max for wrestling.
So the second floor of the field house, that field house design was worked on by coaches, the athletic director, the high school administration. That second floor is going to be AP testing, professional development. It's going to reach far beyond, it's not just a wrestling room. That multipurpose space is a space open for, it could be revenue building, for recreation, like for us to use.
Before we spend $16,000, before we spend $16,000, we should know what the revenue is going to come from, like what we're going to do for revenue building.
Listen, I'm just going to say this. We didn't make those decisions for these plans in a box. There were a lot of stakeholders that had a voice in it. I really, Rich, honestly, I totally appreciate where you're coming from. The plans are the plans, the voters will vote, and that's the way that it is.
Right, exactly, I know.
I do appreciate, I respect where you're coming from, absolutely. But like I said, the board didn't sit in a room alone and decide we want to build this huge field house.
I'm not saying you did.
No, but I just want you to understand the process because you haven't, like, this is like my first time interacting with you.
I was just showing you the difference between our surrounding towns and us.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate that, but we're... I am to be honest with you, I don't, I don't mean to, I don't care what the surrounding towns do. I'm just worried about the students of the Caldwell, West Caldwell School District. I don't care about the West Essex Knights or the Verona Hillbillies. I just care about the Chiefs. So I just want what's best for the kids of Caldwell, West Caldwell. I know you do too, but I'm just saying, that's, we put the needs of the kids based on the people who interact with them, who coached them, who teach them, who lead them, who mentor them. We put, we put our stock in what they felt the kids needed, and that's where that design came from. So disagree with it or not, you'll have your time on March 11th, so...
What a quick question to the board outside of that. So it seems like we have a debt service reserve of like 10 billion plus, is that right? I mean...
Brian, I'm going to let the BA answer that.
Our cap reserve is going to be about $10 million as the end of next year.
So for the first proposal, you guys are going to put like 5.6 million of that, and then 2 million for the field house if that were to be approved? And it said you'd have like a 2.5 million still left, right?
The plan is that between the two questions, it'd be about 7.5 million and have 2.5 million.
Right, right. Which is great, by the way, honestly. But so my question is, if we have basically 18% of the budget in reserve, why are raising taxes?
The scope of the projects is so huge. I mean, question one alone, like, it's huge. I mean, we're...
No, but that's paid for by the, that's paid for. We're going to issue a bond for that.
At no tax impact because we're putting...
Right, but you're raising our taxes from last year to this year, and we have a $10 million reserve.
Yeah, Brian, can you, I mean...
So it's not part of our operating budget. So we're planning on putting in 3.3 million for question one, cap reserve. And if you look at the total borrowing, including putting in 3.3 million, and then what we're going to get for debt service aid, we think that's going to, the plan right now, because we don't have the final numbers, they're at stake right now, we think it's going to match the cash flows of the expiring debt, all right? Then we also have another approximately 2 million of projects that we're going to take outside the referendum that we could use capital reserve to finance. So that's 5.3 million. And then we could have approximately 2 million... And then we could have approximately two million dollars going to the field house that would subsidize a total cost of fifteen point four. And so that's a total of seven point five-ish.
And two and a half left.
And we have about ten, so we think we'd have two and a half million left.
My question is, if we have ten million in, in reserve, why would we raise taxes from last year to this year?
Capital reserve money can't go into the operating budget.
Oh, it has to be two separate, has to be two separate houses?
Yes, I'm sorry, didn't answer your question.
I, I mean, all right.
There's a lot more rules to a school board budget than like a regular budget. Like if you're looking at it, like you're thinking of like a household or a company budget, it's, it's very different. We can't just transfer funds from one line to another. There are certain funds that are allocated only for certain things, like a capital reserve, like a maintenance reserve.
But we do transfer from one side to the, to the, to that, to the ten million side, right? Because whatever, when you're running the budget, whatever's left, whatever surplus is, then is moved to here, right?
So at the end of the year, if we had money left and we roll a surplus, we have a chance, we have an opportunity to put some into a subsequent budget, or we could roll into what's called restricted reserves. So they're restricted by, you know, heavily restricted. So cap reserve is only for capital projects.
Wait, which is this area you're talking about, right? Ten million dollars, right. So it's, I'm saying, it does go from one to the other, it just doesn't go back the other side.
At the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year, you could put money in.
I call a special bucket, okay? Yes. It can't go back into the operating budget.
That's what I'm saying.
And there's restrictions on percentages that you can't.
And then when it's left over, it goes to the, the reserve side.
Right. But it can't, it can't flow back in.
I, I got, all right, you know. My point is, why, why continue to raise taxes if, if, you know, if we're, if we're raising tax, if we're, if our taxes are above our costs that we have enough to flow into the reserve side, right? Why would we continue to raise taxes if we're always have a, if we're always having a surplus?
We don't, go ahead, Brian.
We don't always have surpluses.
All right, but we have amassed ten million dollars and eighteen percent of the budget. That's pretty good, right? I mean, I mean, it's great.
So I would, to answer your question is, you don't always have, um, you don't always have surplus. I would say that many school districts in New Jersey were beneficiaries of, of the COVID funds. So it did help offset some of the costs. And so we didn't spend as much as prior years in state maintenance of facilities and things of that nature. And we did have money left over. You have to realize, we have a sixty-five million dollar budget. So if you have a million, million and a half left at the end of the, the year.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a mass, it's not right now, yeah.
It's a small percentage, and you know, you can't be negative. So we can't be negative. So we do budget conservatively because you go negative, then you have the state coming in, and they make decisions.
I totally understand. All right, thanks, guys.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? No? Okay, so again, on November fourth, before we close the meeting, the architect will be here to discuss, answer questions, encourage anybody here this evening or anybody that you know to come. That will be Greg's final time here really presenting on the referendum. And then we have engaged a PR firm. So we'll have a dedicated spot on the website where it'll be housed all of our referendum information. You'll see things on social media. You'll see things coming in the mail to your house. I just really want to again strongly encourage everybody here, anybody listening at home, please listen to the facts that come from the district. Please don't go on I Love Living in the Caldwell's and listen to posts that are done on there because that's third-hand information. The only people that can truly answer questions about the referendum is the central office, the architect, the PR firm who will be working with the architect and central office, and the Board of Education, okay? I really encourage you to please get your facts from the district and not from third-party pages on social media, okay? Because again, we're very fortunate. We live in a democracy, okay? As voters, it's our responsibility, whatever way you're going to vote, but to make an informed and educated decision when you go to the polls on March eleventh. So again, the only way to get that is not through propaganda, but through facts, okay? And we will be very transparent, sharing the facts. Right now, we're at, still, we've been talking about this forever because again, to, to really boost up this group of people, transparency, transparency, transparency is our motto up here, okay? So we've been telling you guys about it forever because we didn't want it to be like, yes, guess what? We're going for a referendum. Like, so it feels like, oh my gosh, all they do is talk about it. But we're still at the very beginning stages. The vote is March eleventh. We have a presidential election coming up very shortly. So once that election is over, then we feel like everybody can then focus on this and getting informed. Besides the fact that our documents are still with the DOE, so we don't have all of our financials back, right? Anything we're giving you is very preliminary, right? As more of those things get finalized, we will be sharing it again. But I just, please encourage everybody, please, 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 visit the district website. Please, please send emails to the superintendent's office. Please come to November fourth and ask questions from the architect because that's where factual information is going to be. And then you vote the way you want to vote. You vote what's in your heart. You vote what you think is best. But do it with the right facts. Don't do it by reading posts on social media, okay?
He gave us wrong information last year.
Right.
So I, I have to say, so.
But I'm here, I'm all this.
No, 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 absolutely. You are here, you are here. And I wasn't, so I'm, I'm going to just be honest with you. I was not here, okay? So I'm, I'm sorry that I wasn't here because if I was here and I had heard that, I would have stopped him and corrected him immediately, okay? He's also, I'm going to be honest with you, he's a human being. People make mistakes. I understand it's our town, but people make mistakes. He's a brilliant architect. There, that stuff has been up there. I am going to speak to him this week before he comes back. Well, he's away, but he's at school boards. But when he comes back from school boards, I will speak to him and make sure that he has all of that information. Again, I'm sorry that I wasn't here. I would have corrected it on the spot, okay? But I do know what I know. I know that there's sixty lockers. I do know that for a fact. They're not eighty, okay?
I mean, I know he has said he can't do more detailed plans, they don't want to spend the money.
Yeah, we're, we don't want to do the, because it has to pass. But sixty.
And yes, it's a example, but it's hard for people to make an informed decision when we don't have.
So you have enough specifics to make an informed decision. The things that he's talking about, Madeline, are that, like, the girls locker room, the spaces are equal. But the girls coaches with the AD might say, you know what? We don't want two rooms, like football, lacrosse, baseball, the boys end, right? They want one big one and then a smaller one, right? The girls might say, we don't, that doesn't fit our needs. This is our enrollment in field hockey, track and field, lacrosse. We want three of this size, three, I don't, like, that, those are the things that aren't going to be mapped out. The, the square footage, equal. The design and layout, we're not going to, we're not going to give him any more money because if it doesn't pass, what's the point? What's the point? All we can tell you is it's equal. The amount of bathrooms, the amount of space for coaches, the amount of space for athletes, male and female, that's all the same. That's, that's the same. We just aren't going to be able to tell you, like, the girls might have three smaller locker rooms. They might have one huge one. I, I can't tell you that. That's going to be, the coaches are going to decide that. That's their job. They're the ones who work with the kids. They're the ones who understand their programs. We don't. We didn't make these decisions. We don't. We trust them, right? That's part of having staff that you trust, right? Like I said again, Rich, and be honest with you, we didn't design this. They did. This was, this, the stuff that came, no, I know, I'm just saying, like, I just want, I'm just being, like, I, I just have to clear the misconception that the board sat around and just decided to do this and be like, we're going to, this was from the coaches, the AD, the high school principal, like, like expressing what they needed and what they wanted.
You're there representing us and our money.
That's right. That's right.
It's the town people's money.
Right, but Rich, I'm also, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate. Yeah. No, but, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to debate back and forths, Rich. We're not going to debate, we're not going to debate back and forth. We're not going to debate back and forth. But I'm going to say, in, in response to Sharon, as I said, being responsible with the public's money, that's why the main infrastructure things, all the academic things are in question one at no tax impact. So I just, you know, I have to continue to say that over and over again. This is not something we could have put everything together and forced it. We didn't do that. We gave everyone a choice because there are people like yourselves that don't agree with it. And that's okay. You don't have to agree with it. We felt that based on what the needs are currently in the district, this was the best course of action forward. And we'll see who agrees and who doesn't on March eleventh, right? All I'm asking is that everybody continue to use the district as your main resource for information and not miscellaneous Facebook pages, okay? That's all I'm really asking here tonight, okay? Yeah, no, Sharon, this is not against you. No, this is not against you. Yeah, that's fine.
I'm just looking at all the building that's occurring.
Yeah, right, but Sharon, yeah, you don't, that's right. No, and I have to tell you, you don't have.
Today is summer.
Yeah, that's okay. And you don't have kids in it, like, it's fine, and you're, I mean.
No, I don't have kids in the district.
No, but I'm saying, you haven't been following the meetings to know stuff about the demographics, demographic studies because you're not here all the time. Right, right. It's totally understandable. It's, Sharon, it's totally understandable. But that's why I wanted you to have the right information about what has gone into this. Can you just, yeah, I, I know, you can stand up, just stand up. You don't have to come up.
I just want something else to clarify.
Yeah.
So how many high school students do we have?
Dr. Conklin.
Seven hundred and forty-eight as of today.
And seventy percent of that would be?
Uh, we actually have over six hundred kids participating in sports, freshmen, JV, and varsity.
And you're not double counting?
No. I am, if I double count, if I double count, then it would be seven hundred and ninety-eight.
I, I was just wanting to say.
That's six hundred, and we have over thirteen hundred students in clubs and extracurricular activities. Actually, we only have seven hundred and fifty, so that means some of those kids are counted twice, means they're in multiple clubs. So they're in VAN, they're in art club, but there's over six hundred students actually participating in sports, and I'm downplaying that number. The number I got out of Genesis was six hundred and eighty-three. So I'm saying, I'm saying, seven hundred and ninety-eight students are listed as participating in a sport. We only have seven hundred and forty-eight. That means some kids are playing in multiple sports. Right. Six hundred individual students, based on the way it was sorted. Six hundred and eighty, actually, out of seven hundred and.
Six hundred and eighty, that's seven hundred and ninety.
Seven hundred and forty-eight are, are listed as participating in.
So only fifty, some of the students are not playing sports.
Playing in a, in a sport. JV, varsity, or, uh, uh, and then seven hundred and ninety-eight. Just telling you what the numbers are out of my thing.
Maybe Genesis is wrong.
I don't know how it could be, but I'll, I could double check it for you if you like, sir.
Our, our architect was obviously wrong, so obviously.
Well, I'm not the architect. I'm not the architect. So you could say he's wrong, but I'm not the architect.
You said he's wrong, I didn't say he's wrong. You said he was wrong.
But I'm not the architect.
I was just curious.